Okay, hey everybody, welcome to the Curlin Community Connection. It's five o'clock and I still believe it's Wednesday. Is it Wednesday? Yes, it's Wednesday. We're trying to cover local politics once again. And tonight we have a special guest, one of nine city council candidates. The election, the first one probably, is August 4th. I'd like you to meet Becca Linick, who hails from Illinois, came out to Scottsdale in 1997. Has been married now for quite some time, I'll just say that. She's got three children spanning an age from 14 to 30, and a dog. She's a real estate agent with RE/MAX, she does residential and commercial. And, uh, welcome to, no, residential and...
Property management, residential property management, sorry.
That's all right, I make many mistakes. That was just the first one of this half hour. So anyway, Becca is not, Becca's smart enough to correct me when I'm wrong, which I do appreciate. She's also willing to run for council, which I greatly appreciate. This is going to be a conversation, we're gonna ask some questions. However the conversation goes, is how it goes, there's no crying. I try to ask pretty much the same questions of all the council candidates. And we do this as not as me endorsing you, or you endorsing my race for the senate, for the house, but as a way to kind of increase the knowledge, so we have voters that go out there with an idea. And, without further ado, welcome Becca Linick, how are you?
Thank you, candidate Curlin. I so appreciate you for opening up this venue of online, just, you know, conversation. I think it's important for people to get to know the candidates. And during this time with pandemic, it's not as easy as it would be during other election years to be able to meet and greet people. And so how else are you gonna get a feel for them? And it's a little bit bionic being on the computer, but it's the best that we have right now, right?
Yeah, you gotta monitor and adjust, monitor and adjust. Thank you for saying that, I appreciate that. And, and I don't have to remind you, but please don't attack any of your other candidates that are you running against. This is just about you, coming out with a positive position, and it's not a debate, okay?
Yeah, that's not my spirit.
Excellent. Hey, so tell me, let's get right down to it. What makes you the person to elect for one of the three council seats?
Well, there are several things that make me a perfect candidate for council. Number one, I live south of Shea. We haven't had anyone on council for over 15 years that lives in the south part of the city. Number two, I have children in the public school system. And number three, I'm a full-time residential Realtor. And so I have a job, and I'm out connecting with people. I have a huge network. And I feel like it's really important to know what the residents of Scottsdale need, want, and say about our city. And the only way to do that is to get out of your house.
Yeah, so I failed to mention, if you're out there watching on Facebook, please put yourself a question in there, if you have one for Becca. You just started off with a question mark, so Andy can then pull it out and put it into the Zoom chat, and I can ask her and get those answers for you. Becca, you've mentioned that you're a real estate agent, which I'm kind of wondering how the market is right now, particularly for Scottsdale, because that's where we live. But also just around wherever else you work, whatever cities, with now that COVID kind of putting us into this crazy box.
Yeah, so, you know, real estate is alive and well. We've been an essential service. And, and so there hasn't been a day that I haven't been working through this whole thing. And that looks a little different today than it did before. There was a good chunk of time where we were doing only virtual. And I wouldn't open it, again, being a property manager, I wouldn't, I wouldn't open a door for anyone that was in an occupied space. And so especially when this was a little bit more of a question mark as to how we can protect ourselves. You know, now we know that we can wear the PPE devices and wash and, you know, try to keep your distance. So there are mechanisms that are in place that allow us to continue to be in person again. And, you know, I think virtual tours are always gonna be an important part. But real estate's alive and well, it's absolute, I put an offer in on Saturday as a buyer's agent, and we were one of 21 offers. We were 10,000 over ask, and we did not end up with the house.
Wow.
Yeah, it's absolutely, today I talked to a guy, we're gonna submit an offer tonight. And he's already got three offers, they've got 10 more showings today, that was at 3 o'clock. And it's, we have had an inventory shortage, meaning nothing to buy, for over two years. And with money being almost free, or 3%, you know, it's, we've had the pent-up buyer frustration and anxiety, and now that the money is cheaper, you can buy more house, because the interest rate is lower. So you qualify for a higher mortgage with your house, and not enough to sell right now. So if you're thinking of selling your house, it stays the day.
Really? Well, we might have to talk, because I like a good deal, I like a bargain.
Seller's market has been for over two years.
Wow. I'll have to talk with you offline about what inventory is out there. But, so, let me ask you a follow-up then, because as you know, I'm running for the house seat here in District 23, 102. And I was disturbed back in 2016 when our local representative voted to reduce the ability of local towns and municipalities to make laws governing how they do vacation rentals, Airbnb. So how do you see going forward, if that is then repealed and allows the cities to make their own ordinances? How do you see that working out if you're on the council?
So I don't see the bill being repealed. I've been at the senate hearing, last two hearings that they had, at the cap, Representative Kavanaugh and Brophy McGee were the co-chairs to those hearings. And they are the one introducing the legislation to try, and, well, actually, it's already been introduced, and try and reel it in just a little bit. It's interesting, because I think it's, it's an issue that we feel very personally in Scottsdale, but we have to understand that we're a state. And the laws go, and big towns, small towns, you know, they, when legislation is passed for the entire Arizona, it's not specific to one area. And so when we were at the senate hearings, both senate hearings, there were representatives from all over the state of Arizona telling about how that impacts their cities, their property values, their pricing, their availability, and how it's forcing some people out, because the owners are seeing that rather than continue to rent on a long-term basis, they can make more money on a seasonal basis. And so personally, I don't think it's a good idea to repeal that. And I don't think that's even on the table anymore. So it's something that we need to keep an eye on, for sure.
Well, I appreciate those comments. And you and I actually disagree on this, because when I'm there, I will work to repeal it, because I think what you said about the different areas having different issues, that's exactly what local control's about. I don't think you can make a statewide kind of law like that without allowing for the people that you locally elect to kind of step in.
The reason I say that, Eric, is because there are some small towns that run on a shoestring, and they don't have the ability to create those restrictions. I mean, they have the ability, but it's more, more of a challenge for them. And so this allows for them to, you can create, Scottsdale passed the ordinance, right? The noise ordinance, that, the party ordinance, they called it, whatever you wanna call it. So they did, they were able to do that at a local level. And so the broader spectrum of what's in place right now allows for our municipalities to enforce their own codes, plans, ordinances, policies, whatever it is that they want. And that's on the individual basis. So it's more like an umbrella that covers the state, and then the cities can then go in and make their own rules.
Okay, so let's get back to Scottsdale specific. What, you know, we've had, we've had groups of people that seem to be split into two camps, about growth and not growth, and I'm, really, I'm just kind of in the middle there. I just don't like the way people have gotten so ugly, it seems, about, you know, the online behavior. How do you bring such divergent groups together? Because, you know, one Scottsdale, how do you see bringing folks together to make decisions for the common good?
I really think it starts with council. I think the most difficult thing is when you have seven seats, you want not necessarily seven opinions, but you want good conversation. You don't want us all to agree, you don't want us all to disagree. You want good conversation where you can just express your point and educate based on your knowledge, put it into the soup, if you will. And then at the end of the day, your job as a council member is to spit out the best result for who you're representing. And I think it starts with council. And we have been lacking on our council that collaboration. And I think we've lost sight of the fact that it's not us against them, it's a we. We are council, it's not us and them, in two separate camps, it's one camp. And I think that the focus has kind of taken from that. And that's, to me, that's very disappointing.
Yeah, well, I agree with you completely there. What do you think the greatest need in the city right now is?
Well, I mean, if you talk today, you're looking...
Well, okay, what do you think is, let me rephrase that, let me rephrase that. You're gonna be on the council, what do you think is the most important issue to tackle?
Honestly, I think it's that collaboration, because everything starts with the ability to work together, right? And that's city departments, that's city individuals, that's city council, that's city staff, that's everyone. You need to have, you need to have the ability to sit at the table and have that conversation. And that's where it starts. Everything is based on whether or not you can communicate.
You know, it's funny, I'm hearing a lot of what I sound like when you talk, because, no, seriously, seriously.
Awesome, I love that.
Here's the thing, I mean, you and I are now, all of a sudden, we're politicians, right? I was a lifelong educator, you're a polit, you know, we're a real estate agent, but you're now a politician by the very nature of running for office. But yet, when we get there, hopefully when we get there, we don't wanna deal with politics, we wanna deal with good governance, and we wanna deal with everybody working together in a way that, well, you don't have to agree, but you don't get disagreeable. You know, those little phrases, they actually are workable. You and I, if we were on other sides of an issue, we could come together and say, you know what? I still like Uncle Sal's, you wanna go get a pizza or something? We could talk about other interests that maybe we could work on to better the city. Hey, Alex Wood is actually a South Scottsdale resident, she has a specific question for you. She's a teacher friend of mine. She says, "Becca, what would you do to improve South Scottsdale parks and public spaces?" And she says, "I would specifically like to see Pima Park improved and a crosswalk with lights put in."
So across Thomas, she's talking about, Pima Park, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah, I think that's the one over there by 86th Street and Thomas.
That's what I'm saying, that the lights and the crosswalk would have to be across Thomas, because 86th is not that busy. So I'm just, I'm assuming she's talking about, I know where Pima Park is, I live like, I mean, I could probably spit on it right now, not really, I'm exaggerating.
Don't spit on Pima Park, I still sometimes go there. But people don't, I used to live right, I used to live right down there by Thomas and 82nd Street, and I used to bring my baby over there, and they had misters that would come out, little water feature. I used to love, well, the kid used to love running around, I used to like it in the summertime. But anyway, go ahead, how would you improve the public spaces and parks down south?
Well, I remember as a volunteer for downtown Scottsdale, on the corner of Brown and Main, and this is maybe a long answer to your question, but it's about budget, right? It's about allocating to infrastructure. And that's not sexy, and that's not fun, people don't like to pay for those things that don't make a great impact right away. But I do feel like improving parks and, and open spaces in not just South Scottsdale, but all of Scottsdale is a budget issue. And where I was going with that is I remember being a volunteer on the corner of Brown and Main one year, and we were looking to cut expenses. And this was right around that recession time, you know, the big R. And instead of the grass, if you know the horse sculpture right there between the J2 Mexican Imports and Bishoff's beautiful property there, right there on the Civic Center Mall? So that's where we post up, you know, our information cart is there, and we're there in our City of Scottsdale ambassador clothing. And right behind us are the horses in that beautiful bronze sculpture. And then there's a small patch of grass and a little bit of a water feature there. And one year, because we could not afford to sod that area, they, they being the city staff and city crews, came in and they would paint that grass green to make it look like it was beautiful and lush. And so as an ambassador, I felt compelled to make sure that I told the parents, hey, I'm okay with your kid rolling in that, but he may come out green, right? Like, I saw it time and time again, so I tried to get him before they'd get on their knees and start rolling around. So it's all about budget.
Take a little bit of Scottsdale back to Chicago with them.
Yeah, they're like, "How did you get green, Alex?"
That is funny, that's funny. Hey, I think, I think we have a great city. I mean, you and I, we could live wherever we wanted in Arizona, or any place really, but we choose to live here. What do you think is the greatest strength of Scottsdale?
You know what, I live in a neighborhood that has third and fourth generation families, right? You know, you can walk around the corner and there's grandma, and walk down the street and there's your brother, and, and so, you know, it comes back to the people that live here, right? And the people that continue, and I know it sounds ridiculous, but we've, we've got the best community, and people work their whole life to come here to die. We get to enjoy it full of life every single day, right?
Yeah, I love that, the people. Do you live in one of those old allied homes?
That's exactly what I live in, yeah, an old allied slum block, yeah.
Yeah, 1959, I think they were made, and they're still standing.
But yeah.
Yeah, just gorgeous. That's, that's the real difference, I think, about the southern part of Scottsdale, that was, if you remember, like Shea was the edge of town, right?
I heard there used to be boondocker parties out there.
Yeah, yeah, crazy stuff. But it really is the neighborhoods that you have, right? I remember when I was living down there, we used to have an Oktoberfest every year in somebody's driveway, they used to put the thing on your door, and it was like coupled with a neighborhood watch party, so the police would stop by and introduce themselves and say, "This is our beat." And I always brought the best food, I mean, that was the problem, nobody really put much effort into it. But the drink was good, and the people were good, and you saw the little ones growing up. Now I kind of look at the southern part of Scottsdale, I see the next wave of people coming in. Now they have like little ones, right? It seems like there's a lot of strollers, and it's just amazing, it's wonderful.
Our block parties were epic, I'll tell you that. And we still, you know, we put a pin in it for now, but we've had everything from catered, we've had live music out front, we knocked down the whole street, we give our neighbors notice, of course, but we'll block out the whole street and invite, I actually deemed my neighborhood fit, that's back when Phat was P-H-A-T, right?
Yeah, 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 pretty hot and tempting that stands for.
It's Pima Hayden Indian School in Thomas, it's a fit community, right?
Nice, very good.
Yeah, so I've been a block watch captain for 22 years.
Nice. Hey, you mentioned the public school, so I know your little ghost who just graduated from Mojave, because I saw that on your Facebook page, congratulations to him. Me being a teacher for a long time, the two, you know, there have been a lot of questions in the papers when they've asked the council candidates and the mayors, "How are you going to work together with the school system?" You understand, I understand, there are two separate entities, you being on council and the school board, two separate budgets, but it's one Scottsdale. And as a real estate agent, you know that the schools are property values. Do you see a way, when you get on the council, of working together with the school district? Some kind of synergy?
Well, I think it's about that collaboration and communication, you know? I'm a huge advocate of public schools, and, you know, my three have all gone to public school. My daughter is 21, and she's going to engineering school right now. Because of Mojave and Saguaro, she has six years of Mandarin Chinese under her belt. And, you know, she's, she's got a, she's got basically anywhere she wants to go when she graduates. She'll be a senior this year at the South Dakota School of Mines and Technology. And that's, that's because she had a great foundation, starting with SUMC, which is the preschool that used to be there on Indian School and Miller, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, it starts with that foundation of the youth teachers that care enough, and then the public school system that takes them through. And I'll tell you, our Saguaro lifeline at campus, it's fantastic, and they have really gone above and beyond. I've had friends with special needs, I've had friends with athletes, I've had friends in the band, and, you know, all aspects, including my daughter, who was academically, you know, pretty accelerated, they're able to handle all of those different levels. So I think it's about that communication and collaboration. I know there are several efforts, and I'm actually part of that task force right now, that's having that conversation about how we can, how we can get that a little more collaborative with the city. You know, the quick answer is, it's not a council, it's not a council conversation right now. But that doesn't mean that you can't have a seat at the table, or an invitation to have a seat at the table.
Well, I like to hear that. And I do know, you mentioned that preschool. Actually, you and I attended Scottsdale 101, which was right there, we parked in their lot.
Yeah, right.
That was pretty fun, that Scottsdale 101, we met every day, once a Thursday, for like nine weeks.
Yeah, I've been through the citizens academy, the police academy, the fire academy, the Scottsdale leadership, the, you know, so I've been through all that. And I just keep doing it, because you, you can always learn something new, even if you're going to the same places. And in the water campus, I've been up there on tour a couple of times. If you haven't done that, wow, what a cool spot.
Hey, if anybody out there wants to hear some more information, or see some more information, I know there are some videos, Becca's website is beccaforscottsdale.com. You can see the spelling of her name there, there in the page, "for" is spelled out F-O-R. beccaforscottsdale.com, go check it out. Hey Becca, I really wanna go to the House of Representatives here in Arizona, so I'm planning on doing that. And you're planning on being on council? Is there some way that you see yourself working up the chain with the state level that you need from a representative?
You know, I really am kind of about, how do you move the mountain, one rock at a time? I don't have any designs on, you know, running the world, as Ren and Stimpy maybe used to say a long time ago. And so, right, like, I just aged myself, didn't I? Some people are scratching their heads.
You know what, I love that, I love that, Ren and Stimpy. Hey, we got, we got a question from Heather, she wants to know, "How would you increase the availability of affordable housing so young people who work in Scottsdale can also afford to live here?" That's a, that's a big issue, especially with the, with the whole vacation rental soaking off the market.
Yeah, you know, affordable housing is such a generic term. And I'm on the, the local, the state, and the national level of Realtors involved in committees on all three of those levels. There are 1.5 million Realtors in the United States. That number, if that doesn't blow you away, it blows me away, and I am one of them. And so affordable housing has been a conversation for as long as I've been in leadership in real estate. And it, it means something different to everyone. And so, you know, let's just generalize what that means. I'm seeing with the ability of these, we'll call them luxury, because we do have, we do have communities that are being built downtown, and I know as a council person incoming in 2020, people are gonna come to us and go, "Hey, you promised you weren't gonna develop." Well, Marquee and Museum Square, that's a done deal, I have no say in that whatsoever, although I will answer for it gladly, and I will, I will have that conversation. But my point is, those people that are occupying those spaces, those luxury high-end condos that are being built, are, there's a large percentage of older people, and I'm not saying older 90, I'm saying people that no longer want to maintain a pool, have a yard to maintain, they don't wanna paint their house anymore, they don't wanna worry if the roof needs replacing. And, you know, that number could be 30, or it could be 70, it could be anywhere on the spectrum, right? But people that don't want maintenance. Now, I've had several clients as a Realtor moving out of affordable homes, okay? And they'll move into these luxury homes, because they're able to do that. That then leaves the affordable homes to be able to be purchased by someone else that's moving into our city, or just wants to move up, which then provides another opportunity for maybe their starter home to go on the market, to create that as an affordable housing. So there are levels of affordable housing based on who you are and what your income level is. And right now, we do have that stair step, if you will. But that's an issue that's being addressed all the time on all levels. And it's, it's on the forefront of everyone's mind, but in my opinion, we do have opportunities as we continue to provide new, bigger, better, you know, things, choices, I guess, more choices, that's what we need.
Okay, so you live in my old hood, what do you think of the local donut? You love it, or do you love it?
Anyone that has ever been there that doesn't walk away going, "Oh man, I should've never gone there," right?
Yeah.
I have the same feeling about the Milk Depot, have you ever had the salsa at the Milk Depot?
Yes, the salsa, you drive right through, I worked at Ho-Com for a long time. I used to have people bring me that stuff, and I used to drink it like soup.
I do, and my husband thinks I'm nuts, but yeah, it is the bomb.
Yeah, I, I probably, you know, shouldn't point out businesses, but I love the local donuts. So if you get down to the south part of Scottsdale, go look on the east side of the road, right by House of Rice. It's across from one of my favorite restaurants, Uncle Sal's. So here's what you should do, go to Uncle Sal's for lunch, get the chicken marsala, you can't beat it, and then head over to the local donut for a little donut, maybe get the creme brulee donut.
You gotta reverse that, Eric, because the local donut sells out by noon every day, so they won't have anything left if you go to lunch first. You need to go to the donut first and bring everything over.
They'll be late until like 2:00, alright.
You have donuts, but if they're out, they close their doors, and they're going home for the day.
You like Uncle Sal's?
Absolutely, yeah. And it's not bad, and, I mean...
Yeah, Golsman Tavern, yeah, you've got good spots, you've got good spots right there.
Oh man, I'm telling you.
We're gonna play a little game, okay?
Alright, I'm not good with games, full disclosure.
I don't wanna hear it. I make games fun, you're gonna have fun. What are the three, what are the three words? Oh, I'm sorry, Alex had a question, I just got an exclamation point with another question. So we're gonna ask it. What do you want Scottsdale to look like in five, 10, 20 years?
Oh gosh, which one do you want me to answer, five, 10, or 20?
I'm gonna go 10, because it's right there in the middle.
Okay, I see, I see not just Scottsdale, I just see our, our world changing. You know, if you look back at prior to the driverless vehicles, where we're calling a robot to come and pick us up and take us somewhere, you know, transportation is changing drastically because of that. I think that, you know, we're, we're landlocked, and we are the most fortunate city, because there are, I can't think of another town in this, in this United States that has as much preserve, open space, and dedicated land for the residents to use. And so, you know, I think Scottsdale really has three parts to it. The downtown area, and that's where you're gonna see more of your heightened density. I live in what I consider the suburb, right? Where we have the single, or two, or three-story, the tri-levels. There aren't a lot of tri-levels around here, but there's, there are some. So I live, I live in suburban Scottsdale, right outside of downtown. And then we have the beautiful horse properties and acreage with the homes in other areas. And even as close as Cactus, that Cactus Scottsdale corridor there. And so, you know, we really have, and then, and then the preserve, right? So we have so many different aspects, and I think that really is what keeps Scottsdale special. And so I'd like to see the ability to have that kind of diversity.
I live up around there, by the Cactus Corridor, right there. And as I drove to my house one time, I saw a camel out on the road, the guy was walking his camel. Honest engine, I, I, honest to God, I took a picture of this thing, I posted it on Facebook, and one of my friends, Tracy Sabah, who's from the Sabah family, says, "Oh yeah, that camel's been there forever." And I'm like, "Whoa."
Just another Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was Tuesday. Hey, so I have a little game for you, I wanna know, what's the most, what are the three most important words in real estate?
Location, location, location.
You got it, we are going to, we're gonna play a game called Three is a Charm.
Alright.
Are you ready? All of these things start with three. I'm gonna give you hints, I'll try not to deduct any points, and I will not embarrass you. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, this nursery rhyme about, "See how they run, see how they run." Three...
Isn't that nice?
Yes, put one on the board for Linick, nice, okay. Yes, mice. Okay, so this is a candy bar, not one that I would choose.
Three Musketeers.
Three Musketeers, very nice, okay, two for two. Alright, let's see if you really do know the Ren and Stimpy agent. This was a movie that I used to love, it was very funny, it had Chevy Chase, Martin Short, and Steve Martin.
Oh, that's... Oh, the three uh, uh, yeah, what are they called? Yes, I remember that. That's the three.
Spanish for friend.
Amigos, thank you.
Hey, there you go. I'm going to give you a half a point for that.
Yeah, I remember their sombrero. I mean, they were, that was such a timeless movie. I should actually go watch that again.
Okay, you and I are too young for this, but it used to be a TV show where the guy would go.
Three fugitives. My mom's favorite duo in the whole world.
Very good. You are hot. You're sizzling. I've got two more left. First one is regular points, the last one is double points, okay? Yeah, it's going to be tough and I might have to sing to give you the answer. Okay, uh, this, this next three, uh, it's about these guys that uh, built a house of bricks, one of straw, and there was a big bad wolf.
Three little pigs, right?
Right, easy. Here's where we get difficult. Here is like the final jeopardy, okay?
All right.
This was an old rock band. They were playing from 67 through 76. They had a breakup.
Three Dog Night.
What?
The Three Dog Night?
Oh, bam! Didn't even get, I didn't even get to sing Joy to the World.
Oh, sorry. Go, I, I didn't answer. Go ahead.
Joy to the world. All the boozing girls. Joy to, oh, oh, she's telling me to be quiet.
I'd like to make a guess, please. Is that Three Dog Night?
Yes, excellent. Oh, this has been so much fun. Remember to go to beccaforscottsdale.com, check out Becca Lenning. She's one of nine candidates running. Make sure you get the information. Make sure you vote. Have a great day, Becca. Thanks for coming on.
Thank you.